Good evening. We will call this meeting to order for the December 14th, 2023 Apple Valley City Council meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone. If you have an item on the agenda, as that comes forward, please approach the podium. When your name is called, we'll let you address the council. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask everyone to rise and join us in the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public portrait stands, one nation under thy command, indivisible, but never to be usurped.
Thank you, everyone. We have, the next item is to approve the agenda. And Tom, I know we had an additional, an additional item this evening to add.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Yes, we have one item that we circulated to the council here earlier this week. This will be item 4X. This is approved consent to amended and restated easement and maintenance agreement for Eagle Point, Apple Valley and Eagle Point, Apple Valley second edition. As that development continues with the second edition, we did make certain that the easements and the maintenance agreements apply to all of those properties. So that's why this item is being added tonight.
Great. Thank you, Tom. With that change, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
A motion from council member Grandal and a second from council member Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries. The next item is our audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda. We did have a sign up sheet in the back. Bryce Wickston, I believe. Bryce, did I say that correctly?
Close enough.
Close enough. Well, feel free to correct me if you need to. So Bryce, come on up. And we've got a total of 10 minutes for this item, so I don't think you think you needed that long, but.
I certainly hope not. Good evening, honorable members, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bryce Wickstrom. I and my, one of my coworkers, Matt Sherber.
Hey, Matt. Matt, if you want a better picture, feel free to sneak back up here and get a little better one if you want one.
Matt, we're here. We are field representatives with ASME Council V. ASME Council V is a union of 43,000 workers who advocate for excellence in service, for dignity in the workplace, and an opportunity and prosperity for all workers. We're here tonight on behalf of the 53 hardworking members of ASME Local 479, city of Apple Valley. We represent employees in public works, utility, street, fleet, building, building maintenance, and parks and recreation, who play a vital role in the prosperity and vibrancy of your community. These workers truly make Apple Valley function as an exceptional place to live. We appreciate the opportunity to bring your attention, to your attention, three matters of significant concern to our members, and by extension, the well-being of your community. Local 479 members are present tonight to share the following concerns and seek your understanding and support as we navigate these issues in preparation for ongoing contract negotiation with mediation scheduled in January. My first point this evening is regarding the escalating cost of health care. Health insurance is a vital component of our members' lives in ensuring access is net, or lives and ensuring access to necessary medical care and promoting a healthier, more productive workplace. However, the increasing costliness of health insurance is placing an undue strain on the financial resources of your workforce. Individuals with family plans are especially vulnerable to this financial challenge. We have been working in a committee with both police and human resources to decipher a plan for the future, but the issue is affecting employees daily at this moment. We seek your intervention into the upcoming health insurance cycle, also, yet also understand the complex nature of the budgetary decisions and the need for responsible financial management. We urge you to consider the well-being of your workforce and examine the potential avenues for mitigating the rising cost of health insurance. Your support in this matter will not only contribute to the financial stability of our members, but will also foster a healthier and more resilient community. Secondly, I would like to address the issue of a flexible yet fixed work schedule. Currently, union employees have longstanding, normal work week of 40 hours, Monday through Friday. This year, the multi-season shift change was enacted required employees to work 10 consecutive days, including weekends. We recognize the value and importance of the workplace flexibility. However, the current practice of a shift change is creating the significant disruptions in the lives of your workers. The newly implemented shift changes within the Parks Department, including the requirement for weekend shifts, pose a substantial challenge for your employees. Exploiting the contract language in this manner was not the original intent of this article and has created a burden amongst affected employees, as well as the hesitancy by employees that other departments will experience similar hardship. This schedule flux makes it difficult for employees to maintain a work-life balance. We understand the need for adaptability, but the current approach is adversely affecting the well-being and the job satisfaction of our members. In light of this, we strongly advocate for the implementation of a set schedule for workers. This not only provides much-needed stability in the lives of our members, but also promotes a healthier work-life balance. Additionally, we propose fair compensation for those hours that fall outside the agreed-upon schedule. This adjustment is not only essential for the work-life balance of our members, but is also crucial for maintaining a motivated and productive workforce while preventing worker burnout. Finally, I would like to touch on employee retention and wages. In this post-pandemic culture with a prevalent, prevalent economic inflation, the employees who daily respond to the needs of keeping Apple Valley a great pace to live, grow, and recreate are feeling the burden. The results of recent wage comparison among 20-plus local communities showed Apple Valley, while being a nationally recognized top-tier community, is on the low end of wage scale, even compared to smaller cities nearby. During negotiations, it was reported by management that the council was in favor, in favor of, and I quote, "creating a competitive place of employment," end quote. Due to the ongoing struggles of retaining and recruiting employees, with a positive outlook, it was much to our dismay when we were met with an unyielding offers from management that were nothing more than the same or similar as past negotiations. In an attempt to move forward with negotiations while showing compromise, the union accepted a tentative agreement on a standard wage increase with the belief that management would work with us on the work schedule language. As you may be aware, mediation has been scheduled for January regarding the discussion over the schedules, over the work schedules, among other items. Our concern is about the lack of member support of a contract while the issues of wages and retention are being undervalued. Your employees are simply seeking a wage increase that brings us up to par with other cities and/or language that keeps our normal scheduled work shifts what they have always been. We request your support in addressing this matter, as it is fundamental to the overall satisfaction and stability of your workforce. We believe that a defined work schedule will not only benefit our employees, but will also contribute positively to the success and sustainability of your community. These three issues are the, are the focus of the upcoming contract mediation in January. By proactively addressing concerns and finding common ground, we aim to build a foundation for a stronger partnership. Your engaged understanding and support in resolving these matters are crucial, excuse me, are crucial to achieving a mutually beneficial outcome during the mediation process. We appreciate your commitment to open dialogue and look forward to working together for the betterment of your community. And I thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. We appreciate the comments. We don't normally do a lot of comments on these, but I just, we're working through this, as you guys know, right? The tough balance of trying to figure out how to do the right thing for all the people and take care of the budget and the total numbers all at once. And one, I appreciate the comments, but more than that, I appreciate the work, right? I think last winter, if anything, told us that, kind of what that work level is. We know it's there, you know, kind of the, the expectation of all the things just working is really easy to overlook because all the things just work, right? We only know they don't work when they don't work. And so, we appreciate all you do. We're working on this one, but I appreciate the coming. It's coming. Yeah, it's gonna come quick. That's what we're afraid of, right? So winter's coming, but then so is all the regular day-to-day stuff, right? And we are 24/7 operation, as you all know, because you gotta take care of it whenever it happens. We can't wait till Monday through Friday all the time, so.
These are the faces of your employees.
Absolutely, they are.
Who are able to come here tonight.
We appreciate you guys, appreciate you guys coming. So as we move on to the rest of the meeting, feel free to stay if you want to stay, but don't feel obligated to stay just because the meeting's going on. So if you gotta get home to families and that kind of thing, absolutely feel free to scoop, but feel free to hang around as well. We got budget and those kind of things coming up. So thanks for being here, guys, and thanks for all you do.
We appreciate it. Thanks.
Before I move on, I'll give everybody just a minute to, to, to move out if they would like. Otherwise, stick around. All right. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. These are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or a citizen requests to pull an item. Council members, any items you would like to pull? Anyone in the audience? All right, seeing none, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Melander, a second from council member Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries. We'll move on to the regular agenda, starting with item 5A, which is our 2024 proposed budget and property tax levy. And Ron has this item. We have a truth and taxation budget meeting and then adopt a resolution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Got her all loaded up here.
As Tom gets settled, just, I've had a preview of this presentation. I'd just like to ask, we let Tom get through the, or Tom, Ron. Sorry, I'm looking over here. I don't know why. It's been a long day. I'll let Ron kind of work his way through the presentations. I think a lot of the questions I had looking early on were answered when we got to the end, so.
I did, I did speak with somebody on the phone today asking for directions and stuff, so I don't see that they need it in attendance. But, so with that, we'll, we'll start off. As the mayor mentioned, this is our 2024 budget and property tax levy, public input meeting, I guess, public adoption, truth and taxation meeting this evening. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to present the proposed budget in public, receive public comment, and then, following that, adopt a budget and levy for the coming year. If the city council chooses, there is a backup date, the next city council meeting, which would be on the 28th, if we don't complete it this evening. We'll cover some of the changes since the preliminary budget and levy was adopted in September. And then, again, the purpose of the meeting this evening is not to address market values of any individual properties. Market value determination is part of the county's spring process, and we do, we'll cover this in a little bit. If you do have questions about your market value and property classification, we encourage you to connect with the county assessor's office. They're in Hastings, so it's 651-438-4200. The agenda this evening, we'll talk about the changes since the preliminary levy and budget was adopted in September. We'll go over an overview of the budget, the valuation increases, valuation process, the statements of the estimated taxes that everybody received a couple of weeks ago, the tax impacts, the tax levy, and what's driving the tax levy increases. And then, we'll look at some comparisons to other cities in, in addition to the consumer price index over time. And then, we, there are some changes coming for taxes payable in 2025 related to the homestead credit, so we will kind of preview a little bit of that. The budget climate, the economic outlook continues to improve, and the likelihood of a recession seems to be declining. Interest rates have risen, but as recently as today, it's kind of sounding like it may be at its peak, potentially even cuts in the coming year. Inflation continues to impact all areas of the economy. The CPI is moderating, but it's still running at 3.2% as of October of '23 compared to 7.7% in October of '22. The consumer price index is a, a, there's a delay in how we can adapt and modify our budget. So, for example, we won't know what the, we're setting a 2024 budget and levy, but we won't know what the inflation is for 2024 until well, well into '24, not even into '25. So, and households, businesses, as well as local governments, including ourselves, have been impacted by the inflation over the past few years. The current unemployment rate is favorable at 3.2%. And the state budget has announced last, a couple of weeks ago, the state is projecting a budget surplus of $2.3 billion for the 2024 to '25 biennium. They're also looking at the next biennium after that, '26 to '27, typo there, a $2.3 billion deficit. So, what they've identified is a structurally unbalanced budget for the coming biennium, leaving a budget balance at the end of the '26, '27 biennium of just $82 million. And of course, that's four years from now, so there, or a few years from now, so it'd be hard to know exactly what that will be. But likely, there will be no change for Apple Valley in aid, whether it's local government aid or any other aids. We do have some projects potentially in the bonding bill. Whether that's impacted or not, we won't know. Overall, property, residential property values are rising 3.7%, and that's overall the whole property class. The overall commercial property is experiencing a 10.6% overall increase. And the new commercial valuation for new construction accounts for 2.1% of that increase, and the average appreciation on commercial properties is the remainder at 8.5%. Start with the budget process. It's a lengthy process. We begin each spring with the annual goal-setting session, which sets the goals for the coming year. At that time, and this typically have, recently has been in March or April, we receive preliminary valuations from the county, and we can prepare an estimate of the tax impact to the median value home. Based on what we know, we do a two-year budget, so we start with that because we somewhat have an idea what that will be. And then, any known, say, for example, if there's going to be debt issued, we just passed a referendum, so we know there'll be some of that for 2025. But whatever, when we present that in the spring, that kind of becomes the tax impact on the median value home. We've been using that as kind of a target of what we need to keep the budget within. And that is how we start off the process in the spring. The staff then takes that information and the goals for the coming year, and they will prepare a two-year budget that addresses those goals and other operational needs. And then, this past year, the city council discussed the budget at their informal work session in August, and again, adopted the preliminary budget and levy in September. And then, the county uses that preliminary budget and levy that we adopt in September to create the estimate of tax impacts that they were mailed, mailed out to individual property owners just a couple of weeks ago here in, in November. That brings us to this evening, where the city council would consider the property tax levy and adopting the budget for the coming year at this meeting here. Some of the updates, since the September preliminary updated, we did receive some updated tax capacity amounts, which has impacted moderately slightly the, the tax rate and will result in a, an increase in the taxes on the median value home. We, the adjustment in the tax capacity was a drop of approximately $215,000, which increases the tax rate from 36.67 to 36.77, which does result in an increase of $3.50 on the median value home for the coming year. The one thing to point out, we talked about the drop in the, in the tax capacity, is the values, the county will be adjusting these values all, all through the whole process, and it really isn't until spring of 2024 that the numbers will, will say become final. So they will be still adjusting things as we go here. Some of the changes in the budget document this, for this coming two-year period is a change in the Emerald Ash Bore replacement program, changes related to the opioid settlement. We do have a new fund, and we'll talk about how, how that has impacted the budget. We also broke out, the Public Works Administration Natural Resources used to be budgeted together. We split those into two separate business unit program budgets. The Emerald Ash Bore program, our existing practice has been to remove and replace diseased boulevard trees as funding is available either through levy or grants. We're currently spending around 1,600 to 1,900 a tree. We have approximately 1,050 boulevard and park diseased trees that need to be removed. And when we were out with the Night to Unite, we, I think everybody received a lot of questions about, hey, what about all these trees? The budget for the coming year proposes addressing that 1,050 trees in the next two-year period. If we would have, say, relied on our past practice, it would have taken a number of years to address those. So the removal cost is somewhere between 1,200 and 1,500. The one change would be, instead of the city replacing the tree, the boulevard tree, this would be done as the home, encouraging the homeowner to replace the tree via rebate. So if they plant a tree, they would get a rebate. Earlier, we discussed a $200 rebate. That hasn't been finalized. But if they replace the boulevard tree with another tree that is not in the boulevard, so we don't have the continuing issue with boulevard trees. The, the one advantage of doing it this way is the homeowner themselves become a stakeholder in that tree. We feel that they might take better care of the tree and be a successful program in the future. The opioid settlement, this Apple Valley, through the opioid settlements with all the drug manufacturers, will receive $1,119,000 over the next 18 years. There is a requirement of what the expenses can be used for, and then, it's also required to have a separate fund, which we do have a separate budget for that, just that activity. It's currently being used to fund the drug task force agent, a portion of the drug force task agent investigation and enforcement, as well as a portion of the community impact unit connecting community members to appropriate resources and the officers for following up on any incidents. I mentioned letting out the public works and natural resources budget, kind of an idea, the idea is to be a little more transparent, especially on the natural resource portion of the budget and what commitment is, it is taking for managing that program. And then, just for ease of comparability, we did restate the amounts for the prior years, just for comparability. And we did note that across. The total budget for the, the whole city, we have a number of funds, but one thing we want to point out is the, the city is a service provider, so a, a large portion of our budget, probably 34% or 33.6 million, is just the wages and benefits of, of the employees. We do have, and this includes all of our funds, so this includes our enterprise funds. So we'll see that items for resale, for example, 9% of the total citywide budget, 8.8 million. Most of that is related to the liquor store operations. We do have capital outlay. We have a number of funds with significant capital outlay. 27, 28% of the whole budget, approximately $27.1 million, is just for capital outlay and depreciation of the operating budget. Then, all other operating costs, from supplies to fuel to contractual services, make up the remainder, $17.9 million, or approximately 18% of the total citywide budget. The, on the expenditure side, we do have the general fund, which is typically thought of when people think about general government, police, fire, administration, city clerk, streets, public works, park maintenance, all of that is within the general fund. And that's approximately 44% of the total budget, or $43,169,000 for the coming years. The enterprise funds, which is the water, the sewer, the liquor store enterprise funds, stormwater fund, cemetery, ice arena, make up the other 40% of the budget, 39.2 million. The road fund, which is a significant program each year, the, there's an annual street and pavement reconstruction program, the levy support of that, or the total budget, I'm sorry, not just levy support, total budget for just the ongoing road portion of the budget, 7.4 million, approximately 7%. And then, all the other funds, which we have a number of smaller special revenue and governmental funds that make up the remainder, 8.5 million. If we flip it around and look at the revenues, the, the property, the user and franchise fees, and again, this includes the enterprise funds, so this would, 36.2 million, or approximately 40% of the total revenue sources of the budgeted funds, 40% is user and franchise fees. And that is the sales at the liquor store, the water and sewer fund, the stormwater fund. All of that is in user fees. We do, the biggest portion of the total budget is, second biggest, I guess, is 36%, is the property tax levy for the coming year. We do receive intergovernmental revenue for police and fire, but most of this, 4.5 million, is related to the municipal state aid for streets and that program. Licenses and permits, which include building permits, business licenses, and then, all other revenues, 1.6 million, approximately 2%. We are contemplating debt issuance of 2 million. This is in the enterprise fund for the stormwater utility, as well as transfers and admin street fees between the enterprise funds and the, and the general government of 11 million, or approximately 13% of the total budget. One of, the purpose of this evening meeting is to talk about property taxes, so that, again, that's 32.5 million of the total, total budget. And the, most of that property tax support goes to supporting general government, the general fund operations. The total adopted, proposed, adopted revenues, 43,169,000 for the general fund, of which property taxes make up 75.5% of the total budget. So a significant portion of the general fund is funded by property taxes. We have other licenses and fees, like I mentioned, but portions of those go into the general fund. Park and rec fees, rental rentals of parks, franchise fees, and then transfers from the, from the enterprise funds into the general government, 6.3%. We look at the expenditure side, again, 43,169,000 is the total general fund budget. And the, the revenues do equal the expenses. We do adopt a balanced budget each year. Again, the city is a service provider. 64% of the budget, 27.6 million dollars worth, is personal services of the general government, general government operations. Commodities and other contractual services make up 21%, approximately 8.8% of the total budget. Capital outlay, again, not just, a good chunk of the capital outlay within the general fund is the VERF charges that get sent to the vehicle and equipment replacement funds and used for equipment replacement as we go. And then, the transfer to the road improvement fund, 4,360,000. That is the property tax levy support of the annual street replacement program. So there is. So there is a significant portion of that program. We do not levy for special assessments, so a significant portion of that program is funded by property taxes. Then in addition to that, approximately, or 545,000 is a transfer into our, I'll call it our municipal building facilities funds. There's three different ones. We've got a park facilities fund, a municipal building fund for this building and the police station, the police side of this building, as well as the fire, fire facilities. Kind of a breakdown of the median value home, the annual bill for 2024, 1,366 dollars. This just gives you a breakdown of where those go. So for example, if a, a program budget has revenues that fully cover expenses, it, it will not appear in here. One example would be building, building inspections, like their revenues meet or exceed their expenses, so there is no levy and property tax levy support of that activity. But we see the police makes up the largest share of the general government budget, 418 dollars of the annual property tax bill would go to support the police operations, parking rec, 183 dollars, public works, 166 dollars. The street maintenance program, I mentioned the 4,360,000 levy support of that program equates to the 153 dollars per year for the median value home in support of that program. So it, it isn't that the homeowners aren't paying anything, it's how they pay. So instead of levying special assessments infrequently at a very large amount, it's a smaller amount, but it is, does continue each year. And then each of the other areas within the general operations make up the remainder of the general fund budget. We talk about the property valuations. It is a two-year process to establish the valuation, or in excess of two years, actually. The county needs to determine a value as of January 1st of 2023 is what the value is for the coming year, 2024, for tax payable 2024. That includes the assessor review in the year 2022. In March of 2023, the, the county sent out to each property owner a property valuation notice, and those, those are very important notices. Hopefully, everybody looks for those when they get them in the spring, because that kind of starts the whole valuation process at the county level. I mentioned the county assessor maintains the, or manages the property tax valuation process. Throughout March and June, the county assessor, they call it their appeal period, they encourage, if people feel their valuations are not, are not correct, that we encourage them to connect with the county assessor, and they will review the, review their valuations. And I've had them out to my own property, and it's, it's, it's worth, it's worth having them come out, just so they know exactly what they're, what they're seeing, and they're not making any assumptions. In June of '23, for example, then the county will hold their Board of Equalization hearing, and they would hear any other remaining valuation objections, and then they will act on that. And then in November of '23, a few weeks ago, they sent, those values are what's used to prepare the parcel-specific notices for the taxes of the next year, 2000, 2024, taxes payable. The, the two-year process results in a lag between the property's selling price and the assessor's assigned estimated value. For 2024, the value estimate is as of January 1st, 2023. Property values may have gone down since January 1st of 2023, but because the county must assign the value as of January 1st, 2023, they are not reflected, any reductions since that time are not reflected in the valuations that the county uses. Look at overall property values. Overall, property values have increased for the coming year, 4.87% or approximately, from 7.8 billion dollars in the prior year to 8,710,000 for the coming year. We do see that appreciation of existing properties, 304,000 of that is just for appreciation, new construction value of 70,926. Most of the valuation addition, new construction, is in the apartment property classification. This is the ROARs, for example, the ROARs apartment building just coming online. It's a multi-year process for building. Commercial industrial, most of that is down in the Orchard Place area. And the new residential is the townhomes down also in Orchard Place area. The, let's back up. We do see a difference in the overall change in the residential and property classification that is going up 3.7%. And for example, commercial industrial is going up 10.6%. So there, the differences between the increases in, between the property classes will result in a tax shift. So for example, commercial went up more than residential, 10.6% versus 3.7%. That will shift the portion of the property tax burden or the whole levy to the commercial class, as well as apartments is also up 9.5%. So they will also experiencing the shift. Last year, for taxes payable 2023, these valuations were just reversed, and there was a shift from the commercial property class to the residential property class. So this reverses that shift, and it will shift back and forth every, every year. Kind of a visual of the residential median value, for the median value home, that's up 2.8% to the, the darker shades of blue are larger increases, and you can see that much of that darker blue is in the commercial areas, as we expect, and then throughout the community. And shades of red, pink, that is potentially, would be a decrease in the value for the coming year. Overall, we'll look in a minute on calculating tax capacity, but tax capacity would be equate to the tax base. When people talk about tax base, in Minnesota, it would be the total tax capacity for the, for the city. New construction in tax capacity terms is up 1.12% versus last year, 0.37%. So it's a significant new valuation coming on board, and we can see, again, much of that is in the apartment classification. In the appreciation, overall appreciation is 4.46% versus last year, we saw some significant appreciation of 14.8%. The residential property class and the one, one property we have classified as a cabin, second home, is up 3.55%. Commercial industrial, up 8.6%. Utility classification, up 9.2%. Agricultural, up 3.2%. And apartments, up 4.9% for the coming year. And this is appreciation. Look at total, and again, it's the overall, the tax capacity or the tax base is going up 5.58% for the coming year versus 15.2% last year, or for taxes payable '23. Total increase in residential, 3.92%. Commercial industrial, 10.8. And again, these variations in the property class, increases between the property classifications will result in shifts back and forth between the property classes. Looking at the, we talk about new, new construction, and this is tax capacity, not valuation, but tax capacity for residential, and added 2,000, 233,000 of tax capacity. If we look at just the taxes generated on new construction for all property classes, we'll see that the new construction generated 336,000. We'll, we'll see in a minute that the, the total levy is going up more than that, so that is, result in the increase in, in the median value home and everyone's tax, tax bills. I mentioned the median value home increasing 2.8% for the coming year, up to 362,300. Fortunately, it's moderating the increase that was experienced last year for taxes payable 2023. We can see a significant jump in the graph there, moderate in a bit, which is good news for, for many people. Which brings us to the statements of estimated property taxes payable for the coming year. They've been delivered, everybody has received them, and this is, this is what it looks like, and we'll, we'll dive into exactly information that's included in here. Up in the upper right-hand corner, or the, overall, each notice will include the taxes, contact information for each of the jurisdictions on the property tax bill. Up in the upper right-hand corner, where it says step one, this is probably the most, I'll say the most important, but it is this area that is generally, typically generates the most calls from the notices, whether they have questions of their property classification. So if you have homesteaded property, make sure that it says, this acronym stands for residential homesteaded. Want to make sure that, that is correct. They also will include the estimated market value, as well as the taxable market value. And we'll look in a minute at the homestead exclusion, which is the reduction for tax purposes that each property would receive. The homestead exclusion, we'll see, and we'll look at this in a minute, but the, the exclusion for this property, as the property increases in valuation, the exclusion amount that they receive for tax purposes is reduced. So for every dollar that it's increased in valuation, the homestead exclusion will be reduced 9%. So that generated quite a few calls this year, which is surprising, because last year we had a larger valuation increase, and they should have seen even a larger drop in their homestead exclusion. The, the way the homestead exclusion program works, the exclusion is 40% of the estimated market value, up to 40, 76,000. So that is the maximum you would get, is 46, 40% of 76,000, and then it's reduced by 9% for all the value in excess of 76,000, until it totally phases out at 413,800. I mentioned that there are changes for the coming year, and we'll look at that towards the end. The, through the taxation notice, this is the bottom portion of that, and you can see that the taxes for each of the jurisdictions are listed there, along with comparison for the prior year. In total, this, this property is going up 9.8%. The other piece that is included on here is the contact info for each jurisdiction, and I, the folks that I have talked to on the phone, this is where they get the information, and the phone numbers, and the, a couple of the ones that I've talked to have called each, each one of those jurisdictions. So those are, those are the right numbers to talk about taxes at each of the jurisdictions. This year is a, a new inclusion on the backside of that estimated property taxes payable for the coming year. The new state law was they were to display the total levy for each of the jurisdictions within the county and compared to the prior year, and then present a percentage change, and we'll look at this comparison in a little, little more detail. And then, kind of following up on the breakdown of that tax bill, the city of that tax bill will receive 33.5% of the total tax bill for that median value home. County, 16.1%, the school district, 47.5%, and all others, 2.9%. Which brings us to the property tax levy, the property tax components. I mentioned the general fund being a, the largest recipient of property taxes for the coming year, 27.5 million, an increase of 2,610,000 or approximately 8%. We talked, I mentioned the, the street maintenance program, 4,360,000 in property tax levy support for the coming year. That's an increase of 389,000 or 9.8%. Those are the levy support of the road and infrastructure replacement program. I mentioned the three facility fund, the municipal building fund, park facilities and fire facilities, that's an increase of 164,000, which is a larger percentage increase, but not as large of a dollar amount. We do factor in some property tax delinquencies, which we factored in at 50,000. There is support of the ice arena at 121,000, as well as the, the debt service, in this case, the voter-approved debt service is the tax, the tax levy for the park bonds that were issued back in 2007, '08, and 2012. And then all other debt is, for the coming year, this is the, the debt that we issued for the fire station and the CMF project to date, which to date, we've issued 12 million. So this is the annual property tax levy for that, which is an increase of 61,000 or approximately 6.9%. Total increase for the coming year, 2,705,000, 8.44% for the coming year. What is driving that levy increase of 2,705,000? Increased, we'll say, capital outlay related, whether it's the increase in the transfer to the road fund, increase to the facilities fund, increase for voter-approved debt service, which is used for, was used for a capital outlay, as well as the debt service on the capital improvement bonds for, that I just mentioned, for the fire station and CMF project. And then the remainder of the levy-supported, more significant increases, general election, 2024, we'll have a general election, 147,000 increase in that area of the budget. Inflationary impacts in the general fund, this includes wages and benefits, 1,315,000. There is levy-supported positions included in the coming year budget, 53,000. And then we did have to factor in cable franchise fees have been dropping each year. This is the reduction in the general fund collection expected in these cable franchise fees, 93,000. So we have to make that up in other areas, which in this case is property tax levy. We do a number of comparisons. One of the comparisons that we do each year is comparable-sized cities throughout the metro area. The, I mentioned, the city of Apple Valley, our increase is 8.4%, where the green bar in the center there, we can see that on the low end is Maple Grove, and these are the levy that they certified back in September, 6.7%. Cloen Rapids, 6.8%. And then on the high end is Rosemount, which they also have a large public works project going on over there, so that's a good, significant share of their increase, and as well as Lakeville and Bloomington, which make up the pack. So we are just to the high side of the midpoint, variable cities. And if we look at just the preliminary levy as a percent increase of just the, we'll say, the larger Dakota County cities, on the low end is South St. Paul and, and West St. Paul. If we go back and look at other ones, they had larger increases in prior years. But again, Apple Valley is towards the, the higher end of the midpoint on the Dakota, larger Dakota County cities for the coming year. We have, I'll say, a number of 2024 budget items of note. The preliminary levy is increasing the 8.4%. The median value home, as we just talked about, is increasing 2.8%, which with the loss of market value homestead exclusion is, results in an increase in the taxable market value of 3.11%. And the impact on that median value home is up 6.96%, $92.16 a year, approximately $7.68 a month, from 1,273 dollars up to 1,366 dollars. And the important part of this is it continues the city council's goal to not specially assess for the infrastructure and street maintenance program, which, as I mentioned before, includes a levy, levy support of 4,360,000 or an increase of approximately 9.8% for the coming year. We'll look at the tax impact to the median value home and walk through a calculation. The, I mentioned, the median, median value home is 362,300. We looked at the homestead market value exclusion for that property, 4,633, resulting in taxable market value of 357,667 dollars. And it's that number times the, the state's class, property class rate for that property class of 1% for homesteaded property valued under 500,000, results in a tax capacity of 3,577. That's not the most that a residential property would pay. That's not the most that a residential property would pay. That is just a variable that, term that the state uses, tax capacity. And the county will do this calculation for every parcel in town, add those up, and those are the total tax capacity values that we saw a few slides ago. So you, you add all those up for all the properties, you divide by our levy, gives us a property tax rate, or property tax, tax capacity extension rate is thirty-six point seven seven percent, results in gross taxes paid of thirteen hundred and fifteen dollars, plus the referendum of fifty-one dollars, is where we get the property taxes paid for the, just the city's portion of the taxes of thirteen hundred and sixty-six. We compare that to the prior year, it is, again, an increase in total of ninety-two dollars on the median value home, from twelve hundred and seventy-three up to thirteen hundred and sixty-six, which as a percentage is seven point two four percent. And again, that, that's the median value home is three hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred. So that means fifty percent of homes are valued at that amount or lower, or, and fifty percent are valued at that level or higher. We look at, we can look at a sample of commercial property, and this is just the city's portion of that commercial property. The one I pulled out experienced a valuation increase of nine point seven percent, which is about the average. We have so few commercial properties, that it's hard to come up with a real reliable median. So one, one million four hundred and twenty-five thousand is value on this parcel. Results in the, the city taxes, six, six, for two thousand twenty-four, six thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars, add the referendum, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, the total city direct taxes of six thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. There's, must be an error in that change column, because it certainly is more than twenty-three dollars. It should be one thousand eighty-five dollars, or approximately nineteen point three percent. We do, commercial properties do pay fiscal disparities, and that is one of the largest numbers on their property tax bills. And for the coming year, five thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. And we'll notice for this parcel, commercial fiscal disparity portion of the tax bill, actually declined for the coming year. And that's metro-wide tax rates and tax valuation input into the pool, results in a reduction in the fiscal disparity burden, and a total increase on this property, commercial property of nine hundred and nine dollars, up to twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars, approximately seven point seven percent. One of the other comparisons that we, this is a new comparison for the coming year, and again, this is the consumer price index. And again, it's, this one is August to August, which is, just when I created this, was the most recent one available in two thousand five. If we assume two thousand five is the base year, and we apply the, the, the green bar is the taxes on the median value home in two thousand five, and if we apply the consumer price index to that amount each year, we can see that the taxes on the median value home are, are, are following the consumer price index. And again, the, we are levying in advance, and budgeting in advance of knowing what the upcoming inflation is going to be, or an increase in the consumer price index. So in, in two thousand twenty-four, we can see that we do have an increase in that, and we won't know the two thousand twenty-four CPI till well into, well into twenty-five, actually. We do, I think one of the more significant comparisons that we do is our taxes on the median value home in comparison to, again, the same comparable-sized cities in the metro area. We can see, I'll explain briefly how this chart works. The very top, we have Edina, and the percentage in the blue bar, that is the tax extension rate. So in Edina, their tax rate is twenty-eight point five, which is much lower than Apple Valley's, but they have a much higher, median value home, in this case, six hundred and ninety-six thousand. So in Edina, the median value home would pay two thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars in the city portion of the taxes only. We do that same calculation for each of the cities, and we can see that Apple Valley, for the coming year, two thousand twenty-four, on the median value home, thirteen hundred and sixty-six dollars for the coming year. And again, we're, we're in the median, middle of the pack there. And a lot of the Edina, for example, their tax extension rate is lower, mainly because they have a lot of commercial valuation, which lowers the tax rate for everybody. They just have a very high median value home. We'd also like to point out that our levy in Apple Valley does include the support of the infrastructure and road and infrastructure replacement program. That is not the case in, in all the other communities. We do that similar calculation, or comparison, rather, with the, let's say, the larger cities within Dakota County. And again, we're to the lower end of the, the middle of the pack there. And again, Mendota Heights has a median value home, five hundred and fourteen thousand. They also have a little bit higher tax rate, so their taxes on the median value home is two thousand seventy-five dollars. West St. Paul is a much higher tax rate, but a lower median value home. So that is how the comparison of all of this, this chart works. Another comparison that we do is the, according to the state auditor, they gather information each year from every jurisdiction, and they will look at all the expenditures, and in this case, is the governmental funds, so it excludes the enterprise funds. But the per capita, expenditures per capita, and we can see that in two thousand twenty-one, Apple Valley of these cities in this comparison had the lowest total expenditures per capita. And again, two thousand twenty-one, that is the most recent data available. I looked as recently as this morning. We were followed, we're just ahead of Eagan at eight hundred and thirty-two, thirty-eight dollars in total expenditures per capita. And we go, go all the way down to St. Louis Park, which is the bottom of this comparison, they're expending sixteen hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And this will, this comparison will, will change, as we, I mentioned, where we issued bonds in two thousand twenty-two for the construction of the fire station, C amount building, police garage. All of our total expenditures will be changing because of that. So these comparisons will look a little different next year when we get the updated information. Do that same comparison with just the larger Dakota County cities. We can see that Apple Valley, again, is the lowest of these larger cities in Dakota County at seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars in total expenditures per capita. And again, followed down at the, the lower end, I guess, or the higher end, this would be South St. Paul, at nineteen hundred and ninety-four. And there's, there's, there's a story behind all of these numbers. You know, I mentioned Rosemount getting into a large construction project, so they, those will all be impacting their numbers as they go. And each city has different things happening each year. So this is just one of the comparisons. We had a similar comparison last year that went back into two thousand twenty. We were fortunate, the rank of high, number one in both of those comparisons for two thousand twenty as well. That, again, as I mentioned, with the new construction projects coming up, these total expenditures per capita will be changing. Mentioned some other, I mentioned new staffing positions added in two thousand twenty-four. There is a maintenance trainee program, which is a hiring of an employee that would be shared within the parks and water and sewer operations, kind of a training program. I wouldn't say an intern, because it'll be a full-time employee, and they would move between the, between the functions, kind of learning the whole operations. In the event that an opening would come up, they have somebody that hopefully would be trained and able to step into that. There is a police sergeant, a new police sergeant position. We're funding that with the state public safety aid, and then intern positions at the, in IT, and then a mechanic in, in the recreation area as well. Do you want to point out, I mentioned the enterprise funds, the water and sewer fund. We do have a rate increase for the water and sewer, sanitary sewer portion of that utility bill going up five percent. The stormwater rate is going up fifteen percent, and that is related to ongoing capital outlay needs of the stormwater utility. And in the next few years, we'll be starting another large, a very large, street and infrastructure replacement program. We call it the Apple Neighborhoods down in the southwest area. A lot of stormwater needs down in that area. The streetlight component of that bill going up ten percent, or, in total, on average for this typical user, would be an increase of six point seven percent. Twelve dollars and forty-four cents per quarter, approximately four dollars fourteen cents per month. I mentioned the tooth and taxation notice calls, we've received eleven so far. The comments received are, are all over the board, but there's concerns about valuation, the valuation increase, the loss of homestead market value exclusion because of the valuation increase. One individual mentioned that we need to tie our budget to CPI. The difficulty with that is, we levy and budget two years in advance of knowing what the CPI really will be. One was just seeking a copy of the budget. And when, I did suggest that he could view it online, he'd, oh, I'd rather just come in and look at a paper one. And I said, well, yeah, the whole four hundred pages is available online. Oh my gosh, we don't, I don't want to read four hundred pages. And then comments about the referendum process. One was just a clarification that the park referendum, the levy impact was not included in the notice, which is the case. We do not, the referendum passed, we have not issued any referendum, park referendum debt. So there wouldn't be a property tax levy for that until two thousand twenty-five at the earliest. And then we had some other questions unrelated to the city's budget, homestead status of a refund directed that person to the state department of revenue. How do I obtain homestead status? How do I obtain disabled status? And then some people wanted us to update the mailing addresses for their tax payments, and questions on when the tax bills are due. All of those questions, as well as the property valuation and status, are directed to the county. They administer the, the assessing values, determination of the assessed value, as well as property classifications. And again, their number is at the county assessor's office, six five one four three eight forty-two hundred. The, there are property tax refund programs assistance, and again, this is for the two thousand twenty-two returns, which you file your refund in twenty-three. In four thousand twenty-two, there was a total household income maximum of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty, with a maximum refund of three thousand one hundred and forty. And then, the way the formula works, property taxes that exceed one percent or two, two and a half percent of the income, you have to have lived and owned an house on January second, and it has to be, of course, classified as homestead property. There is a special property tax refund that in prior years was, if the net property tax increased by more than twelve percent, and the increase was at least a hundred dollars, you would get a refund. And there's a formula that's in the tax tables for that, with a maximum refund of a thousand. For the refund related to two thousand twenty-two, that threshold was lowered to six percent, with the expectation that that would go back up to twelve percent for taxes payable two thousand twenty-three, which would be the returns people filed in two thousand twenty-four. There is a renters' property tax refund, maximum household income for that is sixty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty. There is more information available on the state's website at the department of revenue, and you'll find them in the form M one PR instructions. I would just go to the internet search on M one PR, and it'll take you right there. The, one thing to point out here, the two thousand, I mentioned the change in two thousand twenty-two may not, people may not be aware of that. So if your taxes last year went up more than six percent, you're entitled to filing a refund. If you haven't filed it, you have until next August to file that. There is a senior citizen's property tax deferment for households owned by someone over sixty-five years of age. There is an income restriction, have to have lived in the home, and then you have to have a mortgage balance that's under seventy-five percent of the estimated value. And what is deferred is any property taxes exceeding three percent of the, of net income. The state pays the tax, and then the amount that the state pays becomes a lien on the property. And the lien will, will remain with the property until the property is sold. So it, it isn't a fit tax avoidance, it really is a deferment, and you will pay in the future. And again, more information at this department of revenues website. There is, I did spend some time talking with one gentleman about obtaining disability, disabled veteran property exclusion. So there is a, a program just for disabled vets, in addition to disabled non-veterans, I guess, that reduces the market value exclusion, special market value exclusion program just for disabled vets. You'll see either a reduction of one hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand, depending on your status. And again, this program is administered by Dakota County. So I worked with this gentleman to get him in contact with the right people at the county. We hope, we hope he, he found the right information. There is also a disabled property owner classification, and that's a special homestead classification, and that's for persons who are blind or disabled. And you get a reduced tax rate for any homesteaded property, and then the disability must have occurred prior to June thirtieth of the year. And then, again, this program is also administered by the county. There is, I mentioned the temporary changes in the homestead refund, which did increase the, the refund amounts for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-two, and, as well as a change to the renters' property tax refund. Overall, the state increased the, the pool of money for that program by twenty point five percent. And if you file the two thousand twenty-two reform, form, the state automatically recalculated that for you and sent out the additional amount. If you haven't filed the form, you have until August of next year to do that. Title to that, I encourage you to do that. I mentioned the homestead market value exclusion program. There is changes coming to that for the coming year. And again, this is for taxes payable in two thousand twenty-five. The maximum exclusion under the existing program, what we looked at a little bit ago, was seventy-six thousand. So it's forty percent of your value at seventy-six thousand, and then it declines, gets phased out at nine percent of the amount over seventy-six thousand, until it's totally phased out at four hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred. For the coming year, pay, next year, for taxes payable two thousand twenty-five, the maximum exclusion amount threshold is raised to ninety-five thousand, and the phase out, it'll still phase out at nine percent over anything over ninety-five thousand, but it'll phase out at five hundred and seventeen thousand. So there will be additional people getting market value exclusion for taxes payable two thousand twenty-five that weren't receiving it in twenty-four, and it'll, everybody's exclusion amount will increase for taxes payable two thousand twenty-five. This will, because it will be reducing people's taxable market value that weren't receiving a reduction, it will result, overall, approximately a one, one million dollar decrease in the tax capacity. So it will impact the, the tax base, it will increase the tax rate, but the taxable value on the median value home will be lower. So at the end of the day, there's lots of variables that go into it, but approximately twenty-dollar reduction on the median value home for taxes payable two thousand twenty-five. But again, that'll be all based on the valuations of all the property classes coming year. And again, just a graphical image, the, the bar is the amount of the exclusion, and it's forty percent of the property's value until it hits seventy-six thousand, and then it declines until totally phases out at four hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred. And again, the, it'll be shifting up, so it'll max out at, well, it'd be ninety-five thousand, I think is what I just had, so the maximum exclusion, and then it'll phase out at over five hundred and fifteen thousand. Summarize. Summarize, we yield a budget, and property tax levy continues the city's council goal to not especially assess for the annual street and infrastructure maintenance program. And the levy support of that program is four point three, four million, three hundred and sixty thousand. And if we look back to the start of that program, which was two thousand and thirteen, it's an average increase of five point two percent since inception of that program. So it is, construction costs are increasing at more than the rest of the budget. We do have included in the budget a significant increase in the numbers of the Emerald Ashboro tree removals. So people will see that in the coming year. There'll be a whole lot more trees being removed. And again, we feel it addresses the city council's adopted goals for the string. The residential property taxes on the median value home will rise approximately seven point two percent from twelve hundred and seventy-three dollars to thirteen hundred and sixty-six dollars, an increase of ninety-two dollars per year. And we have additional information available on the website, including the full budget, including the slides to this meeting. So with that, the city councils asked to conduct the truth and taxation meeting, ask for public comment and input, and then, following that, consider adopting the resolution, adopting the two thousand and twenty-four budget and property tax levy. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ron. We'll start with council. Are there questions or comments for Ron? We've seen this multiple, multiple times. So if there are no questions for Ron, we will go ahead and open the truth and taxation budget meeting, see if there are any comments from the public. Final opportunity on public comments. If there are no comments or questions, we would look for a motion to adopt the resolution approving the two thousand and twenty-four city budget and property tax levy.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Goodwin and a second from Councilmember Bergman. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that one carries. Thank you. Thanks to staff, everyone, for the work on the budget, too. This is a lot of work to do here. So next item is to adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer for twenty twenty-three. And Ron, it looks like you are up once again. A shorter presentation.
Some slide, yeah, much shorter presentation. Each year, the city councils ask to, if I could get the overhead camera, do I know, I don't know how to do that. Jim, do you know how to do that?
You got it. We went old school on the slides. Is this a budget savings here, or what is this?
Actually, theoretically, it'd be more expensive to print the page. The wrong one up there. The, each year, the city councils ask to approve the transfer, and these are budgeted transfers included in each operating budget each year. So for the coming year, there would be a transfer, budgeted transfer, eight hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred thousand going to the general fund, a hundred and fifty thousand going to the Valleywood Improvement, or Valleywood Special Revenue Fund. Now, we reclassified that. Since two thousand and twenty, two thousand and two, sorry, the liquor fund has transferred to the general government, ten million, nine hundred and twenty thousand. So a significant amount of resources generated by the liquor operations, which is a benefit of operating that. And this is just the past five years of uses of the transfers. And we'll see, for two thousand and twenty-three, it covered the BRF charges, the equipment replacement charges for two police vehicles that'll be purchased, one fire vehicle, two snowplow, two large snowplows, eight hundred megahertz radios, as well as park and recreation activities, including valleywood operations. With that.
All right. Any questions for Ron on liquor fund transfer? If not, we would take a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the transfers from the liquor fund for two thousand and twenty-three.
Short.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Melander, a second from Councilmember Goodwin. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries as well.
I'm opposing.
I'm sorry. I went too quickly there. So that passes four to one then. Thank you, Ruth. And then we have item five C, which is the fee schedule, and Pam has this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Staff is requesting the city council hold a public hearing and consider adopting a resolution approving the city's two thousand and twenty-four fee schedule. Section thirty-five twenty-seven of the city code authorizes the city council to set fees via a resolution, and this process also requires a public hearing. Included in your packet is a resolution and draft fee schedule amending various fees and charges. If passed, fees would be effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four. In the draft version, amendments to the current fees are listed under proposed fees and appear in red. Revisions were submitted by the various departments. As in the past, generally, the proposed rates more accurately reflect the costs associated with the same or are a result of increased fees being charged the city. The Consumer Price Index, or CPI, for last year was three point seven percent. Construction-related items were increased three point seven percent in accordance with the CPI or greater, depending on actual costs. Water and sanitary sewer fees increased five percent. Storm drainage fees increased fifteen percent, and streetlight utility quarterly and monthly charges increased ten percent. Inspections, license, and permit fees were revised to cover hourly costs plus overhead. And in addition to those charges, other minor modifications were made in order to help clarify and simplify the schedule. Proper notice was placed in the city's official newspaper, and that affidavit of publication is on file. No comments have been received from the public to date. There are two items before the city council this evening, first, to hold a public hearing, and second, pending any comments from the public or questions from council adoption of the resolution approving the fee schedule effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Pam. Do we have any questions on the fee schedule? All right. Seeing now, we will open the public hearing on the fee schedule. Anyone who would like to speak to this item? Anyone who would like to speak to the fee schedule? A final opportunity. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll, for motion to adopt the fee schedule.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Goodwin, a second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries, and then we'll move on to staff and council communications. Tom, anything on your end?
Mr. Mayor, just to mention, this seems maybe early in the process, but we are looking for election judges for two thousand and twenty-four. Pam has made it very clear that this is something that we shouldn't be talking about because the first election in two thousand and twenty-four is actually on March the fifth, called the presidential nomination primary. And so while we think of typically elections being in the fall time, two thousand and twenty-four is going to have three different elections, and we could use some additional help in our election judges. You do get paid to be an election judge. We will train you to do that, and you would be joining a great team that Pam, our city clerk, puts together for election processing. So information is available on the city's website, applevalleymn.gov.
Thanks, Tom. And probably worth mentioning, it was on consent a few weeks ago. We have historically used Greenleaf as an election polling place over the years, and with additional school security and some just hassles with kids in the building and that kind of thing, that had become a little problematic. So I just want to thank Pam for hunting down, we had a very tight timeframe a few weeks ago, to find a new polling place, and you managed to find a new polling place so we could not disrupt the activities of the district and add to their security woes and that kind of thing. So just thank you for, thank you for that. Anything from council? Nothing? All right. We'll move on to the calendar of upcoming events. Our next regular city council meeting is Thursday, December twenty-eighth at seven P. M. We would take a motion to approve the upcoming calendar. Motion from Councilmember Grandal, a second from Councilmember Goodwin. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, and then we take a motion to adjourn.
Some.
Motion from Councilmember Grandal, a second from Councilmember Melander. All in favor?
Aye.
I don't have, do we have a closed session this evening? There's one on your, is that just a carryover from the slide in front? It's on the, it's on the screen. That's where John saw it. So I didn't see it on my, on my notes. So that must just be a carryover, so.
Okay.
Sorry. There is no closed session on my, on the official agenda. I think that's just on the slides. So don't confuse me. It's been a long day. All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.